On this day, Wednesday, August 14th, 2013, at 4:05 PM, the regularly scheduled board meeting of the Chicago Park District is being held in the eighth floor boardroom of the administration building at 541 North Fairbanks Court, Chicago, Illinois. Will the secretary take a roll call of commissioners? And before you take that roll call, I would just like to say, we got a letter of resignation from BJ Armstrong yesterday, and we're going to miss him here, but we thank him very much for his service, and so BJ won't be joining us anymore. Thank you.
I'll take a roll call. Commissioner Shalaby?
Here.
Commissioner Coldike?
Here.
Commissioner Lavelle?
Here.
Commissioner Salgado?
Commissioner Allen?
Here.
President Traubert?
Here.
Forum is present. Let the record reflect that General Superintendent Michael Kelly and First Deputy General Counsel Timothy King are also in attendance.
This meeting will please come to order. Item number one, resolution declaring August 18th through the 24th Wheelchair Softball Week, Larry Leibiac.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I have a couple of members of our local teams, and I'll tell you about them in just a moment after I read the resolution. Presented by Michael P. Kelly, General Superintendent and CEO on August 14th, 2013. Whereas the National Wheelchair Softball Association was formed in 1976, and whereas the NWSA has been the catalyst for organized softball competition among wheelchair athletes across the United States for more than 35 years, and whereas the NWSA has affiliate teams throughout the country, including three from Illinois, and whereas the Chicago Park District is hosting the 37th National Wheelchair Softball Championship Tournament, August 22nd to 24th, and whereas tournament games will be played at Soldier Field and at Cubs Care Field at California Park, and whereas 13 National Wheelchair Softball Association teams from across the United States, plus a team from Japan, will be competing for the 16-inch softball national title, and whereas the Chicago Park District wishes both the Chicago Roland White Sox and the Rehabilitation Institute of Chicago, RIC Cubs, much success in this year's national tournament, now therefore be it resolved that we, the Chicago Park District Board of Commissioners and the General Superintendent, welcome the 37th National Wheelchair Softball Tournament and declare August 18th to 24th, 2013 Wheelchair Softball Week on behalf of the Chicago Park District and the people of the City of Chicago, and that a suitable copy of this resolution be presented to the association on this 14th day of August, 2013. So signed, Brian Traubert, President Board of Commissioners, and Michael P. Kelly, General And commissioners, and Mr. President, Mr. Superintendent, I can just say one other We are thrilled to host, as we did last year, the National Wheelchair Softball Tournament. We have members of both the Roland White Sox and the RIC Cubs here today. In the interest of full disclosure, I'm also the tournament director and a member of the RIC Cubs, although I've been a lifelong White Sox fan.
That's a good disclaimer.
You should see actually when he gets out there.
Early on the People in the Parks segment. This competition really is not just about sport, but it's about life. We have so many players that have reclaimed their lives after violent injuries, after catastrophic events such as car accidents, and the work that the Park District has done in consort with the Rehabilitation Institute of Chicago and our other partner Midwest Wheelchair Sport and Social Club really changes lives. We just completed the Valor Games at Soldier Field. The other day, I had a female veteran, former Marine, who came up to me after Superintendent Kelly spoke, and she said, Larry, if not for opportunities like this, I wouldn't be here. Not, "I wouldn't be here in Chicago." "I wouldn't be here." This is about that, and that is about this. We are looking to bring many more injured and disabled veterans into our ranks, and I give us all citizens of Chicago the challenge of helping us identify those disabled veterans so that we can field another softball team next season under the banner of the Chicago Park District and the City of Chicago that is comprised fully of veterans.
Larry, how many teams, how many participants will we have in this?
We have 13 U.S. teams and an All-Star team from Japan making a return appearance, and the superintendent will welcome them at the South Lot of Soldier Field on Thursday morning. I welcome all of you commissioners and everyone in the audience to come out and see our brand of 16-inch wheelchair softball.
So my question is to the Sox and the Cubs, are we going to beat this team from Nebraska or what? I mean, these are some serious players, right? That's all we can hope for.
Hate that team.
(laughing).
Glad I didn't say that out loud.
Tournament Director.
Thank you very much for this opportunity.
Well, thank you, Larry. I certainly, I'll pass along with you, we'll pass along the information to the board as well as the mayor. It's a well-attended event, it's really great, it's a wonderful experience, and I also want to thank you for your efforts and everybody at the Park District except for Valor Games. That was also, that was, what, our third Valor Games? I think we had 300 athletes yesterday, and we continue to grow, and really, it's a wonderful part, and it's just another wonderful facet of what the Park District does in Chicago.
And kudos to our Special Recreation Unit growing and really giving added value to already existing national facing of the Chicago Park District and its efforts to serve athletes and individuals in general who have disabling conditions. We will pass along this resolution to the Commissioner, Bruce Freund, in Nebraska, and thank you very much.
You have a ready picture too, it looks like.
Can you guys come to the middle?
I move to approve the matter.
Second.
I'll take a roll call vote. Commissioner Shalaby?
Aye.
Commissioner Coldike?
Aye.
Commissioner Lavelle?
Aye.
Commissioner Allen?
Aye.
President Traubert?
Aye.
Motion carried, and the resolution is adopted.
Can you get us all in?
Yeah, either go kind of scooch together.
Scooch those wheelchairs together, Danny.
Let's go up and stay close.
Okay, ready? One, two, three. Smile. Thank you.
Good luck. Good luck.
Great, thank you. Thank you guys for making the trip here, it's really great to have you here, thanks so much. Item number two, approval of the meeting minutes from the regular meeting held on June 12th, 2013, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
If no objection, we'll apply the last favorable roll call vote from the prior matter to this matter.
Motion carried, and the minutes are adopted.
Item number three, certificate of filing of the 2013 prevailing wage rates with the Secretary of State, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
If no objection, we'll apply the last favorable roll call vote from the prior matter to this matter.
No objection.
Entrees?
Motion carried, and the certificates are adopted.
Item number four, certificate of filing of the 2013 prevailing wage rate with the Illinois Department of Labor, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
If no objection, we'll apply the last favorable roll call vote from the prior matter to this matter.
Motion carried, and the certificate is adopted.
Next on the agenda is the People in the Parks section. Will the secretary please call the names of those who summed up to speak?
We ask that you please limit your comments to two minutes. Our first three speakers are Ananda Brezloff, John Knoller?
Norley.
Norley, thank you. And Tony Niquiz.
Just go on up? Good afternoon, Superintendent Kelly, President Traubert, commissioners. My name is Ananda Brezloff, and I am the Walsh Park Advisory Council President, as well as the Walsh Park Dog Friendly Area Chair. I am here to discuss today two issues. First, a request for consideration for a temporary dog friendly area when our current one is under a relocation redesign process due to the 606 project. There are many reasons why the temporary DFA would be important to our community. There is a safety issue. The neighborhoods surrounding Walsh Park has a large dog-owned community that relies on this particular dog park. If temporarily closed, this may have a great impact on our park as well as other local DFAs. The impact on our park itself may be inevitable. There is a potential for dog owners to run their dogs in the large grassy area of the park, possibilities that some dogs might run up to children and adults while they are using the open space are great. That would certainly create an unsafe environment. This might lead to unwanted waste on the ground. There would also be a great challenge of getting those who let their dogs off-leash illegally to get them back to using the safer and legal off-leash DFAs. The already overpopulated DFAs Churchill and Wicker Park will be inundated with additional dogs and owners. Overcrowding a DFA is a hazardous and potentially a severely dangerous situation for adults, children, and dogs. Energy levels will be heightened with overcrowding, and thus will create a highly stimulated area where potential for aggressive dog
Thirty seconds remaining.
... behavior might rise to the surface. I'd like to submit a document from the chairs, from Churchill DFA. Second issue is requesting the relocation and redesign of the new DFA. We have been part of this process, we'd like to be part of the process, and there are many reasons in the documents that I'm submitting as to why we should be part of the process. Mostly it's all safety issues for dogs and adults. Thank you. Okay, thanks.
My name is John Norley. My wife Judy and I have lived in the 1600 block of West Bloomingdale since 1999. That's immediately adjacent to Walsh Park. We've enjoyed watching the block grow and prosper, propelled by the renovation of the park several years ago. Our neighborhood has undergone a remarkable baby boom during this time, and young parents pushing strollers and groups of tikes from St. Mary's Daycare routinely parade by our front window. This happy parade is, we fear, threatened by the new skateboard-friendly area proposed for Walsh Park as part of the 606s. The prospect of teen skateboarders powering down our block is a safety concern of our neighborhood, as the signed petitions we are submitting will attest. The attendant noise pollution is also a concern. You might say that skateboarders have every right to use the street, just like all other vehicles with wheels. The problem is that our block has no street, it's just a sidewalk. A sidewalk that no doubt will become a favored passageway for cyclists approaching Walsh Park and the Bloomingdale Trail from the west, since it is the most direct route. Add skateboarders to that mix, and you've got a recipe for complete chaos. It's universally accepted that, with the exception of wheelchairs and strollers, sidewalks are for things without wheels, AKA pedestrians. But skateboarders don't care. How can I say such a thing? Because I used to be one. I was a teenager in California in the 60s when skateboards were the
Thirty seconds remaining. That's okay.
We boarded everywhere, streets, gutters, sidewalks, driveways, shopping malls, and parking lots. Our motto was, "Go with the flow." And if you build a skateboard facility at Walsh Park, I assure you that 21st century versions of my young self will be flowing down Bloomingdale with abandon. My wife couldn't attend this meeting, so I ask on her behalf and that of my neighbors to please reconsider this ill-advised plan. Thank you.
Can I just ask a simple question? Neither the first speaker, the first speaker didn't sign your petition, and you didn't sign her petition? Is that true? I'm just, I'm just trying to keep score on
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
But, I am the first speaker.
Yes.
I didn't get an opportunity to go over it, but I'm absolutely for it.
Okay, just trying to keep score.
No, we are, we're all supporting each other.
Okay.
We think toddlers, dogs, and skateboarders don't mix.
Skateboarders, but toddlers and dogs do.
None of them.
Oh, none of them do?
None, not in the same area.
Might I ask a question about this particular park?
Sure.
Are there other places for young people to go in that area where they would be able to ride their skateboards?
Rob Raymond. I mean, I, the long-term solution is, is we'll be happy to sit down, Commissioner, with the group and try to work through the plans, but Rob, do you have an answer to the commissioner's question?
Yeah, Rob Raymond, Director of Planning and Construction. There's been quite a community process related to the entire 606, Walsh Park being a bookend of that system, that new park system. The proposed skate park area is actually north of Walsh Park, not currently in Walsh Park proper, so Walsh Park is being expanded by perforating the trail, extending underneath it, and expanding the park. So there's not a skate park proposed for existing Walsh Park, it's for the expansion area, and that's a transition down from the trail level to street level. It does have to function as the end of the Bloomingdale Trail as part of that system, and it's something that's meant for wheel-friendly and pedestrian-friendly environments. It's an appropriate bookend to a much larger system that fits into a sort of a puzzle piece. The dog-friendly area is currently along Bloomingdale Trail. It's being grown in size actually in the new plan, given the expansion of Walsh Park, but just relocated away closer to Ashland Avenue, which feels appropriate because it's farther away from the playground that exists there now currently. So there's been a lot of talk and a lot of community process related to the plan, but we're happy to sit down with the people who are here today and talk through it some more.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Superintendent Kelly, President Traubert, and the commissioners. I'm here more or less just to give a shout-out to the Park District and all the advisory councils that work together with you. I know that the playground is moving forward. I did receive an email from Michael Lang saying that the contractor was notified, and they're going to be starting on the playground pretty soon. But the other thing is that I wanted, I'm concerned about is security. You know, and not so much for Tewee Park, since we installed the security cameras there, a lot of the shenanigans that used to go on around the park have been diminished by about 70, 75 percent. My concern is with Willie White Park. You know, I mean, it's really, it's really a problem area there, and I don't know if Tom Byrne, the head here of security, is working with our companion with the 24th District, and they were supposed to put a camera in the middle of Willie White Park to see if they can stop some of the violence that's going on around there and some of the issue rates, you know, and stuff. The other thing, I really wanted to give a big shout-out to Friends of the Parks for getting together with you guys in the playground renovation program. We were lucky on the north side there to get four additional playgrounds, even with our new one at Tewee Park, and that's about it. I really wanted to congratulate everybody, especially Friends of the Parks, for working with you guys all the time and putting all their time and effort with all the advisory councils and giving us advice on what to do, where to go. And I also want a big shout-out for People in the Parks, because people should be able to come and express their opinions or whatever, you know, without tearing you guys apart.
Thirty seconds remaining.
And, yeah, Teresa, thank you.[1126.83][1126.83](laughing). I'm a die-hard Cubs fan, but I do root for the Sox.
Our next three speakers are Dwayne Trust, George Blakemore, and Libby Reed. Libby Reed? Okay, our next three speakers are
Oh, George is here.
George is here. Georges?
Hi. Good afternoon. My name is Libby Reed. I'm the representative from Friends of Kilburn Park Organic Greenhouse, and just wanted to talk to you a little bit today about some of the things that we've been doing over the last year, and a couple of questions about what the future holds. Firstly, I wanted to invite you all to our second annual fundraiser, which is tomorrow evening from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. It is at Kilburn Park Organic Greenhouse, and if you like good food and good drink and good music, we would love to see you there. Secondly, I wanted to let you know about a great improvement that we made in the children's garden. The Friends Group recently sponsored pergola, which creates more shade in the children's garden, which is a great benefit not only to children's programming, but also to the cooking demonstrations that we do there. I as well wanted to thank Friends of the Park. Kilburn Park is also receiving a new playground, which we are ecstatic about, as it brings a lot of neighborhood kids, not only to the playground, but also to the garden. Lastly, I wanted to let you know that Friends, for the 2013 year, has been looking to raise funds for, to replace the south wall of the greenhouse with polycarbonate. This would greatly improve the growing conditions inside the showroom as well as the production house. I know that
Thirty seconds remaining.
renovation of the greenhouse is in the capital budget. However, with some of the personnel changes that have been going on, we just would like to know who we should speak with, to know that that project can indeed continue forward in the future.
Rob walked out. Is Pat LaVar here? There.
Okay.
Pat LaVar is the chief operating officer.
Fantastic.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Oh, and I have
Okay, thank you.
George?
Good afternoon. My name is George Blakemore, and I have spoke on this particular issue many times to the Park District Board. I am advocating that the Park District and Cook County with an intergovernmental agreement make sure that the citizens of the City of Chicago receive their 51 free days at Brookfield, it's two free days at Brookfield Zoo. So I need your support to make, to ensure, please don't say, this is county business. This is Cook County, the City of Chicago. Your citizens are from Cook County. They pay taxes. That Lincoln Park Zoo is limited to the service and the variety of animals that they have there, when you know your constituents are entitled to that one free day a week at Brookfield Zoo. So whatever, make sure that your constituents are not short-changed, and that day must be designated. It must be a designated day, just like at the Art Institute, the Field Museum, our citizens, see, you've got to educate them.
Thirty seconds remaining.
We want our citizens to get our free tax-paying dollars. We pay county tax at Brookfield Zoo. We want you to go into an agreement and be proactive, and make sure that we get our designated day at Brookfield Zoo. I'm, I hope that you're going to do this, the president, you said that you was going to do your best, but you need support from
You exceeded your two minutes.
From the other board members. Thank you very much. If I have exceeded my two minutes, but this is something very dear to me and is very important, and Governor Quinn says, I heard something on the news about these days, that he wants our citizens to get these days at these
Thank you, George.
institutions, and I want them to get them at Brookfield Zoo, and all of you should agree with me, you're entitled to that day, and thank you again. I hope I've been articulate enough, what you understand.
Our next three speakers are Rena Thomas, Rena Henderson-Mason, and Carmen Lopez.
My name is Carmen Lopez. I am a mother of teenagers, boys, that like to ride bikes and do tricks on their bikes, and I'm petitioning for the park with the free wheels. I'm not used to talking in front of a lot of people.
You're doing great.
So I'm sorry. I have all the signatures of people that want them to have a bike park here in Chicago. See, this is the picture of all of them, and those are all the signatures. I went through everybody to get
We'll get back to you.
Sorry. Webster's could talk better than, sorry.
What, is there a particular park?
It's the Bloomingdale Park.
All parks that
Wells
Right now, if it becomes real friendly, that'd be nice. Lots of skate parks are really skate parks, not bike parks. Right.
Yeah, because my kids, they go to Logan, but they take them out, police go there and take them out, and, you know, these kids are good kids. They, you know, I'm happy because my kids went there instead of
Thirty seconds remaining.
Going to the streets. Yeah, so, you know, we need more of these parks for these young
Could you coexist with skateboarders?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I knew that was gonna
So I appreciate.
Finish me. Okay.
Thank you. Finally, somebody heard me, right?
Oh, I heard you.
Thank you.
Our next three speakers are Webster, Popon. Oh, are you Rena or Rena?
Yeah, Rena.
Rena. Oh, there you are, okay. So we'll go with Rena. Then we'll add Webster, and Robert Nichols.
Somebody left their glasses up here.
Whenever you're ready.
Okay. My name is Rena Henderson-Mason, and I'm a representative of the Lake Meadows Town Homes, which are adjacent to Lake Meadows Park and Pershing East School. The Lake Meadows Town Home Association supports converting the now-closed Pershing East School to a full-service fieldhouse to replace the trailer that currently is there. We would like for the Park District to offer a full range of programming for youth, adults, and seniors to fill a void in the community. There are no other parks within walking distance that have a fieldhouse. We would like you to make Lake Meadows a park comparable in offerings to Kinnicott Park. We believe that Kinnicott is a good model to follow, since it was formerly a Chicago public school that was converted to a park in 1990. Also, the current outdoor facilities need some work immediately. The newly-installed basketball courts have had two damaged and bent hoops for most of the summer. It limits the ability to play full-court games, which frustrate my very active boys who are sitting in the back. The playground swings have been removed and need some overall upgrades, and the athletic fields need upgrades to the grounds, equipment, and seating. Attached, I have my proposal, but also petitions for the effort that were started by some of the children who regularly use the park. Also, I have attached a letter to Alderman Burns indicating that a fieldhouse is our top priority. He had asked us to list a number of different options, but we feel like the fieldhouse is the top priority. There's a broad base of support
Thirty seconds remaining.
To convert Pershing East to the fieldhouse. We're happy to work with the Chicago Park District staff to make this a proposal with all due, this proposal happened with all due speed. One other point that I'd like to make, my son is on a travel soccer, baseball, and basketball team, and we go to many suburban parks and facilities, and really, we're just blown away by the level of quality that's in the suburbs. And we'd really like to see the Chicago Park District rethink some of the ways
You have exceeded your two minutes.
To use your resources to upgrade all of the fields and the parks throughout the system. Thank you.
I have that.
Yes.
May I respond to that?
Roger first.
I thought about this a lot, because my son also played travel ball, and when I go
And when I go to these parks and I look at these facilities, I am in awe of them, but then I think about the fact that in many of these communities, there's only one or two parks. And so in those suburban areas, all of their resources are going to those handful of parks. And we have hundreds of parks. And so I, I try not to be too envious and jealous, and I try to understand that it's a whole lot more difficult to distribute resources evenly across all of the many parks that we have, and that it would take us millions of dollars to have the quality of facilities that I see and that I covet in those suburban communities.
Can I respond to that?
Sure.
I think that there are creative ways where we can involve the private sector, nonprofits, as well as the park district, to raise monies to take care of these fields. I also think that there are a lot of landscaping things that are done for beautification that could be budgets cut and restore those funds to fields that are used that are more utilitarian. Just a couple of suggestions, and I'm happy to help and be a part of the process.
First of all, I want to thank you for your input. It, it means a lot, just like every other group that came today. I have had talks as recent as last week with Alderman Burns. He's expressed the same interest you have, that he strongly needs a fieldhouse in that area. Fieldhouses roughly, for the needs of your community, will cost roughly $15 million. And the park district does a bond for about 30 to 35 million a year, two-thirds of which goes to annual maintenance. That said, even if it didn't, with 50 wards in the city, it's roughly $500,000 or $600,000 a year allocated to each ward. That said, the park district has proven over and over that it's very good at partnering with private interests and trying to stretch those dollars and make it work. And that was the lion's share of the hour and a half conversation I had with Alderman Burns about how to get that done. And I'm optimistic, I'm actually very optimistic that we're gonna get a result and figure out a way of doing that, including City Tiff to help us with that. That's a big part of it. So I'm optimistic that you're gonna get the results that you are looking for.
Okay, great.
I think it's not enough, but it isn't, how about Mandrake Park? Is that an Alderman Burns ward?
Yes.
And then, so we raised private funds and just within the last six months, opened up a state-of-the-art artificial turf field there, again, completely built with, with
Private dollars. Not, not only private dollars, but through the efforts of the board president's charity and from someone who lives in California, who probably hasn't been to Mandrake Park, had never set foot on Mandrake Park before that day we cut the ribbon.
It's not enough, but we're
Right, no, right. We are aware of it.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Pabon?
Hi. My name is Webster Pabon. I'm a, I'm a youth cycling instructor for West Town Bikes, which is a bicycle youth learning center, nonprofit in West Town. Cool, so what brings me here? What brings me here was the topic of the new skate park at Welsh Park. I'm a cyclist. I, I ride bikes in the city. I'm also a skateboarder for fun. But the fact that I can, I can, you know, talk to you guys right now and mention that there isn't any bike-friendly skate park, you know, ramp-riding style in the city of Chicago for bikes. And this skate park being like a, a new idea, something that's gonna be built, it being wheel-friendly would be kind of a big deal. As a cycling instructor, I take a lot of my groups to skate parks in the city. I also take them to park districts and visit all types of parks, every single park, west side, north side, south side. But I think Chicago has right now four spaces to skateboard, which is big, bigger than like six years ago, but none that are bike-wheel-friendly. And that's something that we kind of want to bring up. Carmen is one of the moms of one of the teenagers that participate in our programs, and she started petitions about a year ago for a bike-friendly skate park kind of setting. She collected plenty, and we talked to some aldermen, not much response, but this is, I thought, a great opportunity to bring it up to, you know, you guys for
Seconds remaining.
a wheel-friendly area. Bloomingdale being a wheel-friendly space, which I've been up there, you know, it's awesome trail, and the idea is great. I think it's gonna be cool for all young people to use it. It landing at a skate park and it having a wheel-friendly space to ride bikes, I think would be a great thing, and I'm gonna keep advocating for it. Thank you.
I want you to get Rob's information. I want you to stay in touch with Rob and be involved in the design. So is the design final, Rob, on the skate park? So I want you to be involved in that. Roughly, how many people, if we built it, how many people would come from the neighborhood?
Not just Chicago, but you're, you're trying to bring people from Midwest,
Right.
west coast, east coast. I mean, cycling and the, the style, that particular style of cycling and even skateboarding, but having a, a wheel-friendly
Yep.
like space to BMX will bring people from all over the country.
Yeah, I just, I
There, it doesn't, excuse me, it doesn't exist in Chicago.
No.
Wheel-friendly space.
We're, you're probably the 50th person that's raised this with us over the years, and, and so I, I hear you. I'm, I hear you loud and clear.
I'm sorry.
I would, I just, I just commend you for coming to speak
Right.
just as an advocate for young people, and in the city to have, you know, constructive places where young people can come and, you know, express themselves and, and, you know, form community in, in a safe place.
Yeah, totally.
is mandatory and part of our responsibility. I, I'm from Oak Creek, so Oak Creek became kind of famous because of the Sikh temple massacre that happened
Okay.
last year. And down the street from, from my parents' farm and, and the temple is a, like a skate bike park. And there's never been any kind of incident, like any kind of
Right.
violent or safety issues. There's a playground adjacent to the skate bike park, so lots of families come through. It's just a really wonderful space that people bike from all over the city and, you know, come and just enjoy the, the, it's kind of a rural area, but just to see young people just coming and tricking out and
Yeah.
and being constructive, it's just, it's awesome there, and, you know, I think that integrating the bike component would be really powerful, you know, and would bring together kids from all over the city who are interested in this.
For sure. Well, thank you. Just to, just to put it out there, we, as a cyclist, as a, this type of style of cycling, I've been using Logan Square Skate Park.
Yep.
But we've had plenty of issues with like authorities and law because it's a skateboarding park, not a bike park.
Okay.
We kind of still use it because it's only space to use.
Right.
But yeah, just to put it out there.
No.
Thank you.
For sure.
Thank you.
We have had to go all the way to Chesterton, Indiana.
For a bike park?
For BMX bike.
Yeah.
Yep.
Because that's, that's an indoor facility, but, and it's
Yeah, or Wisconsin.
I've had, I've had BMX pros in town with me to look at different sites to convert. Thank you. Rob, raise your hand, just so he knows.
Mr. Nichols?
Good afternoon, and thank you for the opportunity to address you this afternoon. My name is Robert Nichols and I'm the vice president of Ellis Park Advisory Council. As a council working with the park district, we're trying to foster an environment that will provide a place that the citizens and community will embrace as theirs and will assist in making it a safe and inviting place to socialize and frequent. As you know, Ellis Park is located in Bronzeville, and Bronzeville is an area in Chicago that is rich in African-American culture. But it is an area that is plagued by public perception. It's a perception that is very established and one that perceives the area as having some of the worst crime and poverty in the city, according to the article by Dennis Rodkin of January of this year. But we feel this can be overcome. According to the White Paper by Paul Scheer, The Benefits of the Park, it indicates the benefits that parks can bring to neighborhoods. And it goes on to describe the social, environmental, economic, and health benefits that parks bring to a city and its people, some of those being increasing the value of residential property, providing substantial environmental benefits, providing important social and community development benefits, making inner-city neighborhoods more livable, offering recreational opportunities for at-risk youth, low-income children, and low-income families, providing spaces or places in low-income neighborhoods where people can feel a sense of community, and reducing crime, in particular, a reduced juvenile delinquency. Now, you can assist us, and the way we ask that you do that is that we have solicited hundreds and of community residents and businesses sign a petition to rename the park in honor of the queen of gospel music, Albertina Walker. Ms. Walker was a well-known lifelong citizen of Chicago and nationally renowned. She was a community activist, entertainer, and philanthropist for the arts. She was a founding member of the Gospel Fest, which has been held in Ellis Park for the past two years. We feel that this change in name will bring notoriety to the park, and it will no longer be known as the park on the south side of Cottage Grove.
Twenty seconds remaining.
And it is a common to refer to. We ask that you work with the council, increasing the five-year plan to, for the park to increase the program and providing positive activities in the park, to include the planned arts and recreation center. We ask that you assist us in creating a safe and secure area where Chicagoans can appreciate the rich culture in the area, and we ask that you assist us in creating a park that can be cited as a model to the nation of how parks can be used to change and positively influence the lives of inner-city residents. Please work collaboratively with us to foster this change. It is my hope that the wisdom that you possess and doubt by your creator will enable you to make the decisions that will be lasting benefits for the all citizens of Chicago. Thank you.
Ellis Park is on Cottage Grove at like 37?
Yep.
Between 35th and 37. But you have to, for naming a park, it's usually, the person has to be deceased two years?
One year.
One year.
And we typically do not rename a park once it's named after an individual.
Okay. How long has Mrs. Walker been dead?
It'll be three years on October 8.
Three, okay, thank you.
So we'll have to research.
And we have petitions that we can present from the community, the residents, and the businesses.
Our next three speakers are John Page, Kenneth Newman, and Anoy Pierce.
Some of the tenants, board members, staff, audience, good afternoon, everyone. I'm here in support of the wheel-friendly park at Walsh Park. I live at 2108 West North Avenue, a little over a block from the, from the proposed trail. I have lived in the Wicker Park neighborhood since 1979, 34 years. I have had two businesses in the area. I have helped raise five children. Myself and the five children were all bicyclists, skateboarders, rollerbladers, very, very wheeled community. I, I do not own a automobile, so I don't have that wheel in my life. And I have two, I have one grandchild who was born two weeks ago. I've got one that's in the womb, and I have a daughter who's getting married in two weeks. And they all, when, when my children and myself were in the neighborhood, we had no place to bicycle, we had no place to rollerblade, we had no place to use our skateboards. And the Walsh Park is an excellent opportunity to do that. I support it because it adds diversity to the community. It, in fact, will improve the safety of the area by having a diverse, larger community in the area. The more people, the safer it is. It'll provide for educational opportunities. I hope to take my grandchildren there
Thirty seconds remaining.
to teach them to use, safely use their bicycles and skateboards and rollerblades. And I think having us all together in a cooperative neighborhood will help improve the community. One drawback is increased property values and the rising taxes that it brings. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good, good afternoon, commissioners, President Schaubert, CEO Kelly. According to what I've read in the paper today and the information I got at the beginning of the meeting, you're coming out with a bond issue, a total of $193 million. And I hope that somewhere between seven and 10 million of that can be spent on either repairing or building new artificial turf soccer fields. The number of damaged fields throughout the city is becoming a serious issue. Some of the fields that need repair include the Nike Field at Douglas Park, which has a bad rip in it. The old, the field at Montrose and the field at River Park need to be totally replaced. Montrose needs a second artificial turf field. And then building a second artificial turf field at, at, not only at Montrose, but at Calumet, or a new one at, on the second one at Calumet Park, a new one at Marquette Park. Clark Park, right next to the Lane Tech Stadium, is getting a new soccer field, but that now needs to become artificial turf. Douglas Park, because it has a lot of flooding, could probably use a second artificial turf field. There are so many schools that use the fields in Douglas Park, that is becoming a, an issue fighting literally, and, and poor, poor calendar, poor, poor calendar work by the park supervisor there has led to schools, more than, more than one school having a game scheduled at the same time. I think Washington Park, perhaps the north end of Washington Park, near Diet School, that might
Seconds remaining.
be a good location for a potential new, new artificial turf field. And finally, because of the recent, not only this year, but last year, on the Fourth of July, the field at North Avenue this year, the artificial turf field in Jackson Park having fireworks damage on the Fourth, and maybe some other holidays, New Year's, for instance, the park security needs to become much more vigilant at those artificial turf fields. So all I know is the damage. I just refereed last Saturday at North Avenue, so that was a pretty significant piece of damage there.
It was.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm so sorry, Mr. Andy Pierce.
Good afternoon. Andy Pierce, I'm here to speak about Fred Anderson Park, which is on your agenda later today. I want to thank you and congratulate you for getting this far, for naming the park for Fred, for getting it funded, for getting it designed, for working with the neighbors and the musicians to say this is gonna be Fred Anderson Park. So Jazz Fest is coming up soon, it'd be a real good time to get that word out there that it's well underway. I also have with me Leslie Recht, who represents Alderman. Bob Fioretti, second ward.
Thank you, Andy. I should say, Andy has been working with us on this park from the beginning. He's represented the jazz community with many others, Neil Testor others, so he's done a wonderful job. I'm here on behalf of the Alderman. Alderman Fioretti couldn't make it this afternoon, something came up, but we did want to thank you. This has been in process since before he was elected more than six years ago, and we're very, very happy that, that the contracts are ready to be let. We would like to participate, continue to participate. There's a dog-friendly committee that was formed some time ago that's very excited about the park, and there'll also be an advisory council. And we know sometimes plans get changed a little bit in the bidding process, so we want to make sure we continue to coordinate with your planning people and the neighbors on the, on the final work on the park.
You promised me you'll program it. Promise me you'll have jazz music in some way, shape, or form in that jazz area that that, please.
You've been to Tuesdays on the Terrace at the MCA?
Yes.
Great. That's, that's the quality we're shooting for. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Our last two speakers are Barbara Britton and Louise McCurry. Ms. Britton?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Barbara Britton. I'm representing the Burnside Park. I just want to thank the park district for all the activities that they have provided for the parks. There's been lots of wonderful things going on at the park. However, for some reason, the Burnside Park has been lacking many of those activities. We did get a few things accomplished this summer. We got some activities for the boys, and then I worked with the girls out there for five weeks, and that was awesome, because like when the kids came out, every day we met, it would be more kids coming because they just really had a great time out there playing. It was like, wow, we got something to do during the summer. But like I said, it only lasted for five weeks, and it was only two days a week. We did meet with the park district people in June, and we discussed some of the things that we wanted to have out there. I have a copy of that information. We did have a concert in the park, which was awesome. We got people in the communities to come out, people sitting on their porches, people just, you know, came up and they heard the nice music and they really enjoyed it. We were promised a movie in the park, but we were told that they can't provide the movie in the park for us this summer. So I just wanted to know if we could get more activities out there.
Adam Schwerner, laid out in the park coordinator, et cetera.
Okay.
Work with Adam afterwards on that.
Okay. All right, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's the, it's our, yeah, it's getting very high-tech.
Let's hear the sound off.
Hi, my name is Louise McCurry, President of Jackson Park Advisory Council, and I came today to do two really simple things. First, to say thank you. We have been really, really lucky to have Superintendent Kelly and Adam Schwerner come out and take a look at Larrabee. And what you see in front of you, the first picture, is actually a picture of what students from four different youth groups, the Mormon Youth Group, the Methodist Youth Group, the Baptist Youth Group, and the Jewish Youth Groups did. This is their, they're one of four paths for wheelchairs they built over the rocks at Larrabee. They removed the rocks, put the dirt together, so now children in wheelchairs. Instead of parents having to pick the wheelchairs up, carry them over the rocks, slipping and sliding, they can actually go down to lakes. So, this is all kid labor and tips from the park district. So, huge, huge thank you. I have wonderful pictures of the kids, but unfortunately I ran out of, ran out of printing today. But these kids came from all walks of life. There were poor kids and rich kids who had a blast cleaning up the park. So, just know, these were kids helping kids. And promptly after we finished that, the kids in wheelchairs came down and rolled around, so we know it works. Second thing is, thank you for our new playgrounds, because they're amazing. They broke ground on ours this morning. We were all out there to cheer as they were putting it together. Third thing is, thank you for the increased youth groups in the park fieldhouse. One slight effect of that is the park fieldhouse floor is now broken up in a couple of places, so before we start soccer in there, if we could get that fixed, that would be great. But we had kids, no longer had kids hanging out all over the block.
Thirty seconds remaining.
I'm sorry, I'll hurry. The final thing that is really important is that the possibility of replacing, having a new fieldhouse supervisor is, has come through, and the person who's actually been doing the work for the last 20 years should be up for this job, but she's heard through the grapevine that she's not being considered. I write a long list, I know I'm not going to get through here in nine seconds, but just to say, JPAC firmly supports Andrea Frank as the new supervisor. Please, please, please make it happen. And finally, we had our picnic last night, night before last at the Iowa Building. The timers are set really well. They come on in the daytime, and they're off at night. So, we finished, we finished our picnic in the dark.
Exceeded your two minutes?
But started in the light, I'm sorry. Let me get out of here, but again, thank you so much for all the amazing things. It's a much better park thanks to all your work. I want to just recognize Adam Schwerner, Jason Stager, and Jerome Scott, who've done like huge amounts of things to make this park good this summer. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There are no further speakers.
Next on the agenda, we will hear an update on Lollapalooza.
Good afternoon, Commissioners.
Good afternoon.
We want to give you a brief update on what is proving to be one of our most successful public-private partnerships. This year's 2013 Lollapalooza concluded about 10 days ago. And let me share with you some factoids about this year's event. There were three days of activity, eight stages, 130 bands, and over 300,000 attendees. That's about 100,000 attendees daily. Out of those attendees, 30% are residents of Chicago, 34% reside in Illinois outside of Chicago, 33%, another third reside outside of Illinois, and 3% are international visitors. Lollapalooza generates about $5.4 million in city and county amusement tax, sales tax, and permit fees to the Chicago Park District, including about $2.7 million expected this year to CPD. When we originally renegotiated this deal, C3, the event promoter, was not paying any amusement tax, you'll recall, any, any sales tax or any liquor tax. Under the new negotiations, we expected to be made whole, so to speak, and achieve our highest year revenue for the park district under the prior agreement by year four. It looks like we're going to hit that by year two, and that's with C3 paying all the aforementioned taxes. The local economic impact in 2012 was 120 million, and the 2013 report is to be finalized over the coming months, and we'll certainly update you with those numbers when they come through. This year, there was a live webcast that was viewed by 1.8 million people worldwide. And that is a wonderful opportunity to showcase our city and our beautiful skyline, which is in the background during the entire webcast, obviously. There were 47 after shows programmed around Chicago, and driving music fans to fill venues and clubs and small taverns and music venues after hours, further exposing visitors to our Chicago neighborhoods. And as a partner, C3 and the Lollapalooza folks are proving to be socially and environmentally responsible as well. This year, over 100, or strike that, over 1,000 children were tagged in the Kids of Palooza Tag a Kid program, which is an identifying system for kids who are lost, or parents can retrieve their children. Lollapalooza fans filled the equivalent of 319,000 bottles at the Camel Pack Free Water Stations. What that does, and of special concern to our next speaker, that, that saves over, it's estimated, over a million plastic bottles that were not diverted to landfills. 167 fans utilized our accessible programs for fans with mobility impairments, a big theme of today's board meeting. 309 people registered to get on the list for Love, Hope, Strengths International Bone Marrow Database, bringing the four-year total to 953 people, with potentially 12 lifesaving matches found during Lollapalooza's inception. So, that's another side benefit. 2,400 fans picked up the recyclables to exchange for commemorative merchandise through the Rock and Recycle Program. And 50% of this year's waste generated from the event was diverted from landfill through extensive recycling and compost systems used in the front and back of the house areas. That was something new this year. Lollapalooza contributed $100,000 to the Chicago Police Memorial Foundation and $90,000 to St. Jude's Children's Hospital, and also provided a behind-the-scenes tour for 100 students in the Think Chicago program, including a discussion on technology as it pertains to the event with Lollapalooza founder Perry Farrell. And certainly, first and foremost on everybody's mind is the landscape restoration timetable, so I'm going to turn it over to Adam Schwerner, our Natural Resources Director. He's going to get into detail on that.
Good afternoon, Adam Schwerner. So, very quickly after the event, the contractor and park district staff and Lollapalooza staff were out on grounds, did a site survey that follows a photo-documented site survey that occurred before the event, before the move-in, so we could actually compare before and after photos and before and after experiences. And within two days after Lollapalooza, there was a staffing at four different sites across Grant Park, working, doing the work of getting the mulch that was brought down there and the mix, the ball mix, used to sop up some of the water from that storm, the one storm we had this year, removing that from the ground, bringing soil in, aerating. By the end of this week, all of the areas within Grant Park will have been aerated, all of the mulch, et cetera, removed, topsoil brought in, irrigation systems brought in, and damaged areas fenced so that the grass can recover. So, very quick turnaround, very quick response. The total bill will be around 210,000 to 220,000. And again, Lollapalooza, C3 is paying for all of that. The park district will be, will be whole at the end of this production, and I think the parks will look much better.
When it rains like it did, before they descend on the parks, is there anything we can do?
The thing that we did is to make available lots of mulch and to try to sop up the water. In truth, there's really very little that we can do. If the people are coming, they're going to come, and to cancel the event would not be sensible. So, the fact is that the recovery will be reasonably quick, and the damage will not even be seen in a couple of weeks.
One thing, though, Adam, you glossed over, is over the years, the evolution of this event, we've put green fencing up over a lot of the most sensitive issues, namely the Elms, that we talked about earlier today. And because landscape means money to our partner, they've become much more sensitive on putting metal, aluminum, or plastic surfaces down when they're doing heavy load-in and load-outs throughout the park. We, our plantings are coordinated. We don't plant trees or hedges or lilacs anymore where they're staging certain areas. It, it becomes a year-round conversation with the promoter. I would say this was probably the best year we've had thus far. The weather had a lot to do with that, but this probably was our best year. And one other takeaway, what we've learned over the years is softball season starts earlier. Now, softball season's over, and we don't permit events right on the heels of Lollapalooza the way we used to, thus setting ourselves up and Lollapalooza up for a lot of anxiety and angst on the part of the permatees. In fact, I don't think the next major event for Lower Hutchinson is until the Chicago Marathon, which is until October, which should give us plenty of time to get the landscape back up and running.
Do we lose revenue by not doing that?
No, we don't. We, we've front-loaded a lot more of the events on the front end, and when you look at the amount of money we've negotiated from Lollapalooza on the back end, it's considerable. So, no, I feel comfortable saying that we've come out, we've come out ahead on this, and the city has certainly come out ahead under this new contract with Lollapalooza.
I, I just want to also point out that 100,000 people came in and out of that park every day, on top of the workers and the staff. And I just want to commend the park district, the Chicago Police, the Chicago Fire Department, the emergency services folks, because, you know, as far as I know, there were no major incidents down over the three-day celebration. There's always the usual, you know, trips by the ambulance to take people who've had too much, or drank too much, or got too dehydrated to the hospital. But, you know, the cops were all over the place. Certainly, they made some arrests, it was appropriate, but it was safe, it was, it was a more or less happy event, and we had no major events, and especially on the heels of Boston, where our anxiety was quite high. And I just want to commend the police, the fire, and the park district for pulling off not only a great event, but a safe event.
It's a great point you bring up, Commissioner. 300,000 people in and out over three days, 38 arrests, and 10 felonies all related to drug possession, all nonviolent, and it was based on the amount of drugs, so minimal.
Great. Thank you.
It's great.
Next on the agenda is a report from the Committee on Administration, Commissioner
The Committee on Administration met on August 14, 2013, to consider matters referred from June 13 to August 14, and hereby recommends that its reports be adopted. Adopted, item one, authorization to enter into a collective bargaining agreement with the Building Trades Coalition's union. Adopted, item two, authorization to enter into a contract for street sweeping services. Adopted, item three, authorization to enter into contracts for rapid-response tree care services. Adopted, item four, ordinances authorizing the issuance and delivery of not-to-exceed $50 million general obligation limited tax park bonds, Series 2013A. $90 million general obligation limited tax refunding bonds, Series 2013B. $3.6 million general obligation unlimited tax refunding bonds, Series 2013C. Also adopted, $50 million general obligation unlimited tax refunding bonds, Harbor Facilities Revenues Alternate Revenue Source, Series 2013D. Adopted as well, item number five, amendment to the Chicago Park District's investment policy. Item number six, intergovernmental agreement between the City of Chicago, Office of City Treasurer, and the Chicago Park District regarding investment portfolio management. And finally, item number seven, adoption of the 2013 annual tax levy ordinance. This concludes the report of the Committee on Administration, and I move for its adoption.
A second.
Will the Secretary take a roll call for the adoption of the matter?
Commissioner Shalaby?
Aye.
Commissioner Coldike?
Aye.
Commissioner Lovell?
Aye.
Commissioner Allen?
Aye.
President Traubert?
Aye.
Motion carried, and the report is adopted.
Next, we will hear the report from the Committee on Programs of Recreation. Commissioner Shalaby.
The Committee on Programs and Recreation met on August 14, 2013, to consider matters referred from June 13, 2013, to August 14, 2013, and hereby recommends that its report be adopted. Item number one, request to officially name Park 499 in honor of John Bean's Beanieak. That concludes the report on the Committee on Programs and Recreation, and I move for its adoption.
Second.
I have no objection. We'll apply the last favorable roll call vote from the prior matter to this matter.
Motion carried, and the report is adopted.
Next, we will hear the report from the Committee on Capital Improvements. Commissioner Coldike.
Committee on Capital Improvements met on August 14, 2013, to consider matters referred from June 13 to August 14, and hereby recommends that its report be adopted. Item number one, authorization to enter into a contract for Maggie Daley Park renovation, Phase Two. Item number two, authorization to enter into a contract for Fred Anderson Park development. Item three, authorization to enter into a contract for ADA transition plan renovation at Independence, Rutherford, Sayre, and Chabona Parks. Item four, authorization to issue final payment for work completed in connection with Greenbaum Park. Item five, authorization to issue final payment for work completed with Armour, Square, Cosiusco, Lincoln, McWayne, Parks, their ADA transition plan upgrades. Item six, authorization to issue final payment for work completed in connection with Horner Park ADA transition plan upgrades. All of these items were adopted. That concludes the report of the Committee on Capital Improvements, and I move for its adoption.
Second.
I have no objection. We'll apply the last favorable roll call vote from the prior matter to this matter.
Motion carried, and the report is adopted.
Next, we will hear the report from the Committee of the Whole. The Committee of the Whole met this morning in executive session to consider various matters appropriately discussed in executive session pursuant to Illinois Open Meetings Act 5ILCS 120, Section 2, Subsection C11, 12, and 21. The committee hereby submits this report and recommends that it be adopted. The Board of Commissioners approved the settlement of Joan Rapp v. Chicago Park District in the amount of $80,000. The Board of Commissioners approved the settlement of Carlos Vega v. Chicago Park District in the amount of $63,000. The Board of Commissioners, per the Code of the Chicago Park District, Chapter 2, Section A, Subsection 16D, approved the destruction of verbatim records for January 11, 2012, February 8, 2012. The Board of Commissioners, per the Code of the Chicago Park District, Chapter 2, Section A, Subsection 16F2, also approved the release of the following executive session minutes for public inspection, January 16, 2013, February 13, 2013, May 8, 2013, June 13, 2013. That concludes the report on the Committee of the Whole, and I move for its adoption.
Second.
I have no objection. We'll apply the last favorable roll call vote from the prior matter to this matter.
Motion carried, and the report is adopted.
Under unfinished business, nothing was presented for consideration. Under new business, nothing was presented for consideration. That concludes the board meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion's carried. The board meeting is now adjourned.[1791.73][1791.73]